Hello, hello, hello. Um, damn, okay, I don't know how to start this.
What happened to hello? How are you? My name is. What happened to that?
I just woke up. Right now, I'm watching. Yeah, I'm trying that hard for real. Welcome to my channel. Please ignore how I look right now. But, um, I don't really have like an intro or anything like that, but my name is Kayla. You know, call me Kaylove. Um, simple girl with lots of love and passion, loving for who I am, or simply keep moving. So yeah, guys, I'm just gonna, um, gonna, um, show you guys, you know, me getting settled and stuff like that, getting ready to hit the shower, you know, brush my teeth, fix my hair, stuff like that, so yeah. This time right now. So yeah, and I have to be there by eight thirty, so I have like an hour to get ready. I thought I would show you guys, um, like my clothes and stuff, like where I keep my clothes and stuff. Of mine. My, I'm gonna wear these pants. You can't see them now because obviously I'm in the dark. But, oh my gosh, this is gonna make so much noise, guys, please ignore if you hear any weird noises in the background. It's my camera holder, that's what I'm gonna get into them because this one keeps making so much noise. So, mind you, this is my first time doing this, y'all, so please, um, bear with me. But I'm wearing this, these pants, it says winter on it, cuz, yeah. Some slides, some easy slides. I be telling people like, oh, um, make sure I get there on time, make sure I get there on time, and then sometimes like I don't really turn that same energy. So, it's not all the time, like this, I'm usually on time most of the time. This is what I use for my face. I just feel like if I had like a big, um, skincare routine and stuff like that, I feel like I would get a little bit lost. I'm like really like, you know, like simple, like I said to one thing, like I've been using this for like two years now. I really like the color white in terms of like, um, maintenance and stuff like that. Like my sheets are white, my towel is white. My sandals, they're not really white, they're more sort of like a cream color. I'm gonna put a mean in between that, you know, cuz I know somebody's gonna be like, oh, her dogs are out, but they're done, and it matches the nails, don't play. Period. About to just brush my teeth, um, shower and stuff like that, so I'll be back. While I'm finishing up getting ready, I'm gonna have, why did I look over there anyways? Long friends are good, I'm gonna have y'all long friends, y'all. I'm super late right now, hold on. But yeah. Now. Are you guys on your way yet?
Yeah, I'm walking around the house now.
Okay, so IHOP takes Apple Pay, right?
I think they do.
Alright, bye y'all.
Please ignore my car. Um, my car's about to be glamorous real soon, okay?
Oh my god, who the hell cares?
I just took everything out because I brought some new stuff, I brought a new, um, fur thing and everything, so please ignore my car right now. Um, living in a dissociated city right now. I like, I'm really a materialistic girl, like, don't get it twisted, okay? Like, this car is in renovation. Bye bye, y'all. Ooh, I need to be careful my tat. I have to stay like this. Alright. Oh, this is my song! This is my song, y'all, like, y'all don't understand. Cashews, everything around me, cream, get the money, dollar, dollar bill, y'all. Y'all, y'all don't understand, like, Wu-Tang for life. Wu-Tang for life. Cashews, everything around me, y'all. I grew up in LA, bye bye, I might have to go pump some gas in my car. I'll be right back. I love you.
Uh, you too.
Get her out of here. Alright, y'all. Alright, y'all, ready to go on this ride? I'm gonna do like a little thing, okay? I'm gonna do like, uh, I'm gonna show y'all like a thing. MCN Back That Low Nigga Play. All head, I get off a nigga jet, see, look at my bun is messed. Why should I leave it like this, y'all? I don't have a comb though, let's think. Well, yes, I do. Hold on, I do have a comb. I always stay prepared, y'all. Wait two jobs and get taxes. You know, can I, can I, oh. MCN Back That Low. How you do that? This is a good song. How you do that, like, yeah? Bro, if I was going to Cali, it would have made sense, bro. Everything, my keys aren't here. I have everything, I think I do it. Alright, y'all. But yeah. Y'all, I'm not even tweeting, I swear. No problem. Hey! We, we have to wait?
Um, just wait until the other person gets here first.
Okay, so wait here. Anyways, y'all, introduce yourselves.
Child, please, introduce yourself!
Marisol. Y'all, just the girls. Um, hold on. She gotta make sure she poke that out. Hey, hey, y'all. I know, right? So y'all, the plans finally worked, okay? Okay, got a pretty chance. I think it's like a pilling. Oh, like they, they make the pancake and they like put stuff inside and like they fold it up. Can I get an apple juice? Can I have some hot chocolate? Can you make sure it's sweet too? Can I get the blue raspberry? Ooh, this is tall, so it's like you seen it before. Yeah, I might go like that, I think I might get this.
I'm gonna have chicken and waffle.
Anyways, talk to the camera, like, come on, y'all, like. How you doing? Hey. Oh damn, I know, my bad. Oh, your nails look mad cute, let me see.
That's on, don't play.
Yo, you, you put the glue?
Ooh, yeah, it's in the bag.
Anyways, y'all, so we gonna, I'm gonna come back when we get our food, okay? So. I put it in here. Mmm, what is this? Mint? She's so edgy, hold on, put it right here. Hey, guys, welcome back to my channel. I'm here with my best friend Kayla Marisol. And right now we're at IHOP, and Kayla is deciding to be not nice to me. And yeah. Right now, we just waiting for our food. You can see this on TV, right? When I post it, you can see it on TV, on your iPad, on everything, like this, I just want you to know that. I mean, as long as I look good, I don't care. That's good. Y'all, I gotta do a thumbnail, y'all, hold on.
Oh my god, I want those fake ones, like.
Yes, yes, it's cute.
I want to see one.
Alright, ready, y'all? Thank you so much. Yeah, especially. I know mine, second I seen, Governor is crazy. I'm dead. You know those TikToks where it's like, you'll post it from eating, and then like after their eating, it's like, oh, like, I'm over them, I hate them. And then it's like, it is what it is.
Right, 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 I know.
I wanna see. I'm gonna, I found something to admit. I'm slowly becoming an IHOP kid. Welcome to the team, people. Welcome to the team, y'all, and it's the best thing ever too, I'm glad.
Well, I feel like any girl basketball game is just like.
Boring?
Cuz more, the guys, it's more like.
Aggressive?
And like, it's fun to watch.
The girls be talking. Nah, cuz the girls, bro, the girl that masked, like, basketball teams, they be almost, I don't know, Robby playing his hair, this girl, this one girl at my school, she be throwing like fits on the court, she be like walking out. But like.
Right, but at least you can see like Jen pushing them and shit like that.
Bro, if they lose the two games, I'll be like.
Bro, Jen, I don't know, y'all. Cuz we haven't really seen Jen in that kind of mood, like.
I never found you funny, I never found you entertaining, I never found you smart, I just. You done lost your damn mind. When you get your damn mind, you call me. Yeah. Wait, lemme see, I never actually seen him.
Girl, that's a dumb.
Why do you do this thing?
No, it doesn't look good, what are you talking about?
Let me see, go back. God is not looking.
It's giving, it's giving mega.
It's cuz it's focusing on it. Cuz I have it on cinematic, like a movie mode, so it will probably sound like an actual. Yeah, it's emotional, that's what it is, yeah. And I'm like, okay, I'm done. Who is buying these people? So that's where you gonna be? Missed, like. So actually, she's, so she's thinking, you sleeping, what about?
Yeah, I was like, oh.
So I wanna go to, like. And it's no organization, don't make shit as well, like, they don't have no type of organization. Or they don't have any good, like, academic programs at all, so I'm thinking, I wanna go to Brown. Do this right there, you know? Exactly, that's.
I got this, exactly.
For the two, bro, tell me now, like, the weather, like, yeah, it's nice, it's hunky, but when it starts raining, girl, like.
You gotta take a breath.
That's what I'm saying, like. It's so much like.
Wouldn't there be like?
Yeah, it's raining. Bloods and stuff like that, you know, but.
Did I get you anything else? I think you asked for a ramp, right?
Yeah. Where is that, your headphone or mine? Did you order like the whole thing and then the side of it? I think you cheeked.
Anything else?
No, nevermind. Bye bye, y'all. So we got our foods. Everybody is eating right now. Okay, I got this Oreo and Oreo, y'all know me, I love Oreo. So, um, we're just gonna be eating and stuff like that, and then we'll get back to you, like, when we're on our way back. Yeah, sit on it, cuz my car is not. I'm sorry, y'all, this is my car, I'm so, so sorry.
This is all the videos for you, y'all.
Hold on. How you doing? Yeah, talk to the camera. Like controller. You didn't know sign, know what's like. Gimme boom boom, gimme boom boom, girl. Gimme boom boom, gimme boom boom, girl. Yo, gimme boom boom, gimme boom boom, girl. Don't play with me right now. Just, no, that's it, please, let's not. How you doing? You're right on me. I did cheerleader, I'm the captain of cheer team. There you go, play. I'm coming, Kri. There you go, play. I'm just here. They are athletics, I'm just artistic. Yeah, I did all the sports. Yeah. I did wrestling. Basketball, volleyball, tennis. Wrestling. I already said that. Oh, I didn't hear. I did flag football. Tell them about your social life, what y'all be doing. I don't have a social life, don't worry. Man, since cheer, I had, I had no life. Girls at the gym twenty-four seven. Oh, yeah. She be, she, she gotta start deadlifting, molly slamming people. Um, me, I don't do much, bro, I'm about to start working, so. And then I work too. They got her. Get piercings. Um, have more self-love for myself. Yeah, focus, just come for me. Mine is to get new clothes, piercings, and money. Oh, yeah, money part two. Okay, I feel like a balloon right now. Hey, y'all. Hey, guys, um, so right now. Right now, we're, um, we're on campus right now, up on campus to, you know, get something to eat real quick. And stuff, um. Yeah, I'm still with the girls. So yeah, um, mind you, if y'all hear the sound, like, if it keeps like making noises cuz of my camera holder, I have to get a new one. So I'm gonna get a new one as soon as possible. See, I just gotta bear me for a minute. Um, camera holder? Okay. So yeah, are you gonna be my cameraman? But yeah, um, the view camera girl right here. Oh, you can't see their faces in the back, there you go. But yeah, um, we're just getting in, then we're gonna go to the basketball game. And yeah. Really? So, back home, and I have to do some tattooing, so I gotta show the content. Y'all should meet someone very, very special to me. Here in the cut, okay? Um, she runs the Upward Bound Program, so any of y'all youngins interested? Just hit me up on Instagram. Hold on. So, y'all, back with another video. Fuck outta here, again with another YouTube video, don't play with it. Oh, okay. Oh, okay, don't play with it, don't play with it. Yeah, y'all. Tell them what you eating right now. Some apple soup potato cinnamon baby food right now. Oh, I forgot the other one, blocking. Not for long, it's crazy. Um, just anybody named.
It was at this moment that he knew. He fucked up.
Whole name is crazy. I'm so bad at hiding my facial expressions, I need to stop. I wanna go home. Okay. I can't, I can't, I can't, I'm dying, I'm dying, I'm done. What are you gonna do?
Oh my god! Why would you do that?
So what y'all think of the game so far?
I like the cheerleader's uniform.
What do you guys like about the, the game so far? I look a fucking mess. Why do I look so black on camera? What do you guys like about the game so far?
Um, it's spectacular.
How you doing? Who are you lying to? Who are you lying to? I'm just happy I could just see Jared Goff and my fat ass cheeks. What's happening? It's a vlog. No, it's a vlog. What do you like about the game so far? I like that I got. I like that I got these cookies. God damn, girl. Okay. Oh, okay. No, it's okay, I thought it was one of the girls. Y'all was finna catch a fade, real fast. What's my mother, what's my, what's everything I love, what's my? Would y'all got something to say? I wanna go home.
Me too.
They're lame. How y'all feeling? Tired. Tired? How you feeling?
Oh yeah, Kitty, maybe go to the gym, it's close at seven.
Hold on, we didn't even do outfit check. Outfit check.
Well, mine, mine is just. Mine's the camera.
Please take off my shirt. Please take this shit off. Ignore that my entire thigh is out, ignore that. Damn, it rips there. And that's easy slides. Label. Label. It's healing, y'all. It's healing. Your jacket is back, let me, let me see her, right there. I was wanting to ask you, like, three times, you didn't hear me. What? What? Do you have any aminos? I, I skittles. Rap battle, rap battle, rap battle. I'm gonna spread it already, mom spaghetti. Thank you. I win the battle. So what y'all selling, y'all? What's, what's the product, what's the product, what y'all selling? What's the product? Cocaine, man. Be like, I'd be like. We don't condone bullying, we don't condone drugs, we don't condone anything. Who is we? He gonna show up when he needs to show, not when he needs to, when it's convenient. For real. That's what happens when you mess with the Caribbean mom. Caribbean bad mom. Y'all, look at Angelique in the bag. It's really cold, it's really cold. Yeah, I wonder why. We out, we out here thinking it's July. I'm gonna see y'all when I get home, actually. Hey, y'all, okay, so I just finished fixing up my room, I know what y'all thinking, why would you like fix your bed and stuff like that when you about to mess it up again? Well, let's just say I have OCD. Okay. Bed is fixed up, my back area is fixed up. Tape area is fixed up, I only have my coat there, but I'm, I'm feeling skeptical about it. So I might move it, but it looks like that, but if I take it off, it'll look better, you know what I'm saying? So I might put it in my, um, I know, I'm gonna put it, I'm gonna put it right here, it looks neater that way. There we go. Um, I'm about to go light another candle for my baby, um. Um, I'mma just go light another candle for my baby, um. My dog, um. She passed away not too long ago, but I have this little area for her. Um, so like, I get. Candles, or if I ever see candles as a gift, cause I really like candles. Um, I put, you know, one particular for her, light it up. You know, whenever I just. I feel cozy, I guess, I don't even know how to explain it. Um, if I continue talking about this, it's gonna turn into a crying video, so. I'mma. Move on to our next topic, but yeah, um. Well, I'mma take a [BLEEP] through a time lapse of y'all watching each of the show. The movie that I'm watching, Barbie Shop, so y'all can, you know, wait for me. I'm not gonna lie, I'm. Really tired. Um, so I'm. That's God talking. That's my ancestors talking, that's my spirit telling me to take my behind to bed. To go take some rest, cause I had a very long day today. I've learned that, you know. Your mental rest, okay, not just mental health, but your mental rest. Is very, very important, because that's the one that keeps your drive, motive, and all that to keep going. So, um, I, if you're still here, I appreciate you so much, like, oh my gosh, like, thank you so much for the support. Um, okay, even if you don't, you know what I'm saying, um. Don't really mess with the content or anything like that, that's completely fine. You know, everybody got their different taste and stuff like that. So, yeah, and so also like, um. Like express like positivity too at the same time. You know, I feel like a lot of us, you know, we go through stuff and be some, it may seem like we're okay, you know, and stuff like that, even though we might be having some other time, but. I just feel like it's very important for me, you know. As a person that's very serious about, um, he- help. You know, mentally. To, I think it's very important, I know it's very important. You know, to always keep going, to never let nobody, um, tell you that you can't do something, or to bring you, or. Sorry, I can't speak, god damn. But y'all get what I'm saying, like, you know, to always just have the drive and motivation to keep going. If you have a goal, you better work every single day for it, for real. And also take time with yourself, you know. Don't feel the need to, you know, be at a certain level as someone, or we're on different paths. Um, we're growing in our own way, we are our own person, our own individual, right? And the little things matter too. If you woke up today and you ate a meal, like, I'm proud of you. If you woke up and. You know, you, you worked out, I'm proud of you. If you woke up, right? And. You fixed the bed. Or you cleaned around just for a little bit. Or if you even watched the show that you said that you was gonna watch, but you haven't watched in mad long, I'm proud of you. Most of the, I'm really in my own world, to be real with you. Most of the times, I'm painting, or I'm sitting down with myself for an hour straight, just thinking, you know. In terms of like, you know, meditating, you know. Cause like I said, I'm a very spiritual person, so. Um. Yeah, or I'm, you know, catching up on some homework, watching, you know, um. SpongeBob in the backyard again, it's like, stuff like that, so. That's really what I do. That I am working on, like, to balance it out. You know? Where I can, you know, give you guys content, but have time to be in my own little piece. So. Yeah. I think that I'm a funny person, you know, I think that I, you know, promote good vibes, so I just, I wanna just express that in any way I can. You know, as a. Um, empath, you know, as a healer of my own. Um. I believe in helping people and stuff like that, and just, you know. Just being all about good energy and aura. So, yeah. Um, I'm talking so damn much. Um, I'm gonna go get some rest, cause I'm really starting to close down. Um. I'm probably gonna have a dream, cause usually when I get tired quickly. Like this, then that probably means I'm gonna foresee something, but. Yeah. So, thank you for watching my diary. My diary, my vlog, you know. Whichever is, um, more easier for you guys, so you know, um. Comprehend with. Um. Always stay positive, let me find a quote, I'mma, I'mma try to do this thing where like. Every day I like, I give y'all a quote to read. Like a motivational quote to read. I have this motivation. Um. App on my phone. And it sends me, um, like, quotes every day. And I wanna share that with you guys, for real, because, you know, even the people who I don't know, like, listen. Welcome to the, welcome to the, you know, to the love, welcome to the fam, like, you're a part of the fam now, so. I will be making sure that you hear in every single one of my videos, something positive. Um, everything positive, period. But, um. Like, you know, whether it's a quote, or just me, you know. Showing a funny clip of video or something, you know. But, let's see. Uh, mm, this is a good one. But it says, "Life is too short to wake up in the morning with regrets. So love the people who treat you right and forget about the ones who don't." Telling you. That's the quote of the day. Cause I really wanna promote, you know, positivity. I think that that's my main goal in my channel, is to promote positivity, good vibes, peace, all that, you know? So. Oh, and laughter. Yeah, cause hello, who doesn't like laughing? Alright, I'mma stop talking so much, though. So, um, thank you for being here. Um, I hope, you know, you have a good night slash morning slash afternoon, whenever you're watching this. Um. I hope you're okay. You know, whoever's watching this, I hope you're okay, I hope you're doing well. Um. Um, I hope you got enough rest. Remember, always stay positive, don't let anybody mess up your grind, what you got going on, okay? Um. Work for what you want. Okay, never give up on yourself. Yeah, remember, if you believe in yourself, you can do anything, always believe in yourself. So, yeah. Thank you, guys. Bye! See y'all later.
Dog, dog, I'm out this bitch! You know, every time I speak, I want the truth to come out. You know what I'm saying, every time I speak, I wanna shiver. You know, I don't want them to be like, they know what I'm gonna say, cause it's polite. They know what I'm gonna say. And even if I get in trouble, you know what I'm saying, that, ain't that what we're supposed to do? It's, I'm not saying I'm gonna rule the world, or I'm gonna change the world. But I guarantee that I will spark the, the, the brain that will change the world.